July seventeenth board meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, please. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being of its own. Okay, I'd like the approval of the minutes of the June eighteenth board meeting.
Make a motion. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. A motion to approve the July eighth special board meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, you need a motion. I haven't heard from Tony, but excuse Tony for the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second. On favor?
He may be busy at work. He may be busy at work.
Okay, approval of vouchers. Okay, general fund. Two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents. Water fund, one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents. Sewer fund, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And we also have some Preston Agency, which is health insurance, for thirty-two thousand nine-six dollars and thirteen cents. I'd just like to say the reason the general fund seems high to everybody is we had major contract payments to pay out this month. We had the fire department, we had our insurance for the village. We had our first payment for the summer rep program, and so that added almost a hundred and sixty thousand to the general. They just got a text from Tony, he's gone. Tony is going. Well, there he is. Hi, Tony. We were just excusing you.
I'm making a motion to unexcuse him.
All right, so do I have a motion to?
I'm the motion to pay those, they've all been on.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, groundwater well development project. Basically, I talked with Matt Soreen, and he has no new updates for us at this point. He's still waiting on Jay Billings for some stuff. So, not much where we stand right there with that. LED street lighting. Finally got some information from Ilya, from New York Power Authority. Looks like, he said within a couple of weeks we'll have the final invoices. But it looks like the total project cost is going to be about three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And if we want to finance it through New York Power Authority's outside source, they'll finance it for ten years at four point two seven percent, which would add roughly eighty-nine thousand dollars to the project. So, right now, I've contacted local banks to see if possibly we could get a better rate. But that's where we stand right now, we don't have to. The only thing is, going forward, if I can't get a better rate, if the board wants to finance it, I do need to let Ilya know that that's what we want to do. Right now, with everything we got going on, that's probably the way we're going to have to go. Originally, I was hoping we'd pay it off, but we're going to have quite a few other expenses, thanks to Mother Nature. So, I don't really need an answer on that tonight, but I will need it by August meetings. So, if you guys think, by then, as soon as I get the numbers from the banks, I'll email that to everybody. Sony, change, is anything there?
Yeah, we did get the final draft back from Tuck Hill last week. I was supposed to meet with Megan on Thursday, but then the county was closed on Thursday. So, that got rescheduled till tomorrow, so we're going to review that tomorrow.
Find anything where you are? Thank you. Veterans Park, one thing we need to do tonight is basically a resolution to accept the grant fund of five hundred thousand dollars for New York State Parks and Rec. It's part of the process to move this forward. Do you have any other comments on that? We're working with the DRI committee also on improvements for the Veterans Park. That's about it?
Yeah, I have a question. About this grant and knowing sometimes how the state, how quickly will we get our funds on this?
Well, basically, there's like half a dozen different pieces of paper we got to give back to Parks and Rec, which is Sunshine Jenkins, Alex Bayway. This is one of them right here, we got to do a resolution to accept the five hundred thousand. Our engineers are working on the other stuff. And once they have all that paperwork, then they will send us a contract to sign, and then we'll get the money.
Thirty days? I know sometimes the slower it ends up, my concern is then we're going to have to outlay that money until we get it. Well, I want the grant, don't get me wrong there.
Well, we'll get the money, but I mean, it's just like the grants that we're still dealing with. Long-term closing.
Like one of the ones you talked to me about this morning, too, for another grant.
So, can we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion, we accept this grant. I'll second.
All right, myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Timmy?
Yes.
Anthony? Yeah, Anthony?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Downtown revitalization. Basically, they're still looking for projects. People need to get their projects in. We've extended the deadline. It was going to be July thirty-first, now it's going to be August thirtieth. So, do you know anybody out there that still wants to get a project in? They need to get it into us, they're going to, we'll have that information probably by tomorrow. They're going to be setting up some more open hours for people to come and talk to the representatives that are working on this with the state. But because of everything that's going on in the state and how, well, we just figured another thirty days to get people a little breathing. Do you have anything else on that, Dan?
No, and I think that that's, it has to happen. I'm worried thirty days won't be enough, but that's better than nothing. So, yeah, no, I don't have anything more, Joe, that's good.
Why is, I got a question, I didn't see this on earlier, how come we got hedges and trucks on here?
Oh, yeah.
I was brought up at the special board meeting that would be spoken about in future, so I thought that was the same.
Mayor, we probably should, we did have the meeting via Zoom with the consultant in the state, and we had what, three or four concepts of the streetscape in the village and Veterans Park and such.
Monument.
Monument Park, so we did review some concepts, which I assume the next meeting is on Monday, correct?
Yeah, at one-thirty.
The core meeting is on Monday, so I'm assuming no follow-up on that ever.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the past one.
Yeah, they had some great ideas. Actually opened our eyes on what we can actually do with Veterans Park. So, it's very informative, and I think moving ahead, it's going to be a really good project.
Great.
So, we have anything new on the hedges, bushes, and trucks? Last I knew, the homeowner was giving some extra time to try and get things cleaned up.
I think, fairness with everything that's gone on, Paul and Mr. Skelso were going to meet and discuss, but with everything that's happened in the past few days, that's certainly not, it didn't happen.
She did work on the trucks.
But it's not back to where it's supposed to be, so it's just continuing on this.
We're in a meeting?
So, in light of everything that's happened, my feeling is that we continue to work with Mr. Skelso.
Okay, it's agreeable. New business, craft surcharges. June twenty-four, water, thirteen thousand. Need a motion to?
I'll move, Mayor.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Craft surcharges for sewer for June. Fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Need a motion on that one?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This was also brought up in the municipal meeting.
Budget amendment, so, everybody have a copy of those? Need a motion to approve those?
Motion made?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we need to be able to sign a warrant for tax collection for 2024. Does anybody have a copy of that?
Very minimal, very nice.
Looks like most of them have come in pretty good, we're just as unpaid as of the fourteenth, was only a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Which is not really too bad, considering it was over two million.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept that and sign it as required.
Second?
I'll second.
On, we got to sign off on this?
Yes. That requires a roll call, I think. Joe, roll call.
Yeah, roll.
We're signing, but we got to have a roll call.
Yep, okay. Myself, yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Lawwell Fire Department. Basically, it's, they're looking for us to, need to sign a letter, send to Mr. Parker, Sixth and Secretary of Labor for Occupational Safety. And then there's also the stuff that they're looking for. Do you want to say anything on this, Joe? I know it's going to be, the big thing is, it's going to be, if it gets what they want, it's going to be quite costly for not only the village, but for the towns, because the fire department's going to go up, what, one point five million?
Well, no, so the one point five million support on news, that was, so one of the big things it's requiring is fire trucks that are twenty years old or older need to be replaced. In our fleet, that's four of our trucks. Four of our trucks would have to be replaced. My rough estimate, if I had to replace them today, at a very low estimate, is one point five million. But there's other things, like the medical physicals, that's an annual requirement. That would increase our budget by about sixteen thousand a year, again, low estimate. The tires on trucks have to be replaced every seven years, even though we have trucks up there that only put less than two hundred miles on them in a year. So, over seven years, they're only going to have fourteen hundred miles on these tires, but we'd have to replace them. There's things like that that are in there that is really going to hurt the fire service, the volunteer fire service as a whole. And it's unrealistic, in my opinion. Are there good things in there? Most definitely, as, I mean, as I've said in a few interviews I've done, I don't disagree with the safety part of what they are trying to get us to, but at the same time, I feel like there might be better ways to get there without us throwing our budgets out the window and throwing our volunteers out the window, because the health factors involved with the physicals and things like that would push a lot of our members out as well, just due to health conditions or things like that. And then there's physical agility tests that they're supposed to pass every year to be an interior firefighter. There's more training, there's more, there's more everything, so. So, yeah, that letter, basically, I mean, it's a very generic letter. If you guys want to have the mayor sign that, I'll sign it as well, and I can actually take care of submitting that to the OSHA people where it needs to go. It's in public comment right now until the twenty-second of July, in which they will close that public comment. And then the next part of the process is, they review the public comments. They decide if there's going to be any changes, then they have to have a public hearing on it. And then they have to open another comment period, but after that, then they would be free to pass it. And I don't, I don't know if we're getting enough heels dug in the mud or not to stop them from passing it as is, or if they might make some changes, which I hope they do. They could make some changes, in my opinion, with just some wording that would make it better for fire departments. Get rid of some of the shells and replace it with best effort type of thing, or something like that. So, as long as you're showing good faith effort to try and meet these standards. But the word shell means it has to happen, and if it doesn't happen, then you're not in compliance. And if you're not in compliance, then we're opening ourselves up to fines or from OSHA slash passion New York State. And ultimately, I mean, they can ultimately close down the department, or a department, and I shouldn't say a third department. They could ultimately, if someone's far enough not in compliance, they could come in and shut your doors, and then, and then what? Who's answering the calls, and what's that going to cost, and so.
Joe, that was a connection?
It was. And I'll open up to you guys, I actually am going out to West Carthage tomorrow. They're having a meeting with supposedly all the state and federal representatives for our area are going to be there, at least have a representative there, or be there via Zoom to have sort of a roundtable discussion about this. I mean, I know all of you can't go because of the meeting laws or whatever, but if one or two of you want to go, you can run away with a ride with me, I'm leaving about nine-thirty tomorrow morning. If you want to just be there, it starts at ten o'clock right at the West Carthage Fire Station, so.
Well, you know, what's the consensus? What's that going to do to the government departments, I mean, it's going to happen, right, obviously?
It will. Yeah, it, it's not, the problem is, so, I sat in a webinar last week, or actually, me and a couple guys went down to down in Oneida County, they put on a good presentation, and there was probably four hundred volunteer fire chiefs, fire commissioners, a lot of Oneida County legislators were there, and they did a whole presentation on this. And so, the big problem right now is OSHA's taking the stance of, I don't know why the volunteer fire service is so worried about this. They're not employees, and we only, everything we have in here is saying, employees, employees, employees. Well, in New York State, that's not true, volunteer firefighters, although unpaid, are considered employees in New York State. So, therefore, but then when that was brought up, OSHA says, well, then that's a New York State issue, that's not an OSHA issue, so you need to take it up with them, not us. So, and we're not the only state that does, there's a bunch of states that classify volunteer firefighters as employees, which then that's what allows us to open up for the workers' comp and the, all the other stuff we get, if we are injured on the job. So, it's, it's a, the way that guy put it that night, he didn't work for OSHA, he actually worked for the National Volunteer Fire Association. He's actually been the face of the volunteer firefighters. He testified before Congress, he testified. I was watching a couple different YouTube segments of him testifying, and it's just very much, he said, unfortunately, I think it's coming. It's going to be, how do we deal with it once it comes? Hopefully, they change it a little bit, modify it a little bit, make it a little, little more, I don't know what the word is, but not so directly line by line, but more up to the jurisdictions to account for however they need to, to make it work for them. Because that's the other thing, is a lot of it's open to interpretation, no offense to the lawyer in the room, but it was written by lawyers. Like, the guy who was doing the presentation, he said, I've read this thing, and he literally read it, it's six hundred pages. He's read all of it, and he said, I've read it multiple times, and I can't make heads or tails of half this stuff. And then when he does ask OSHA about it, they'll say, well, we don't mean that, so, well, you didn't say that in there, so I'm taking it as written, not as, you can't say, right, we refer you to the NFP, I'll use an example, they refer to a lot of NFPA standards in there, which then increases more requirements. And he brought it up to one of them, and they said, well, we don't, it's not the whole standard, it's only parts of the standards we want to follow. Okay, well, that's great, but you didn't say that in your OSHA release, you said it's going to follow that standard, so therefore, the whole standard happens. So, so what that letter actually is recommending to OSHA is to rewrite their proposals, rather than referring to specific NFPA standards, take the parts of the standard that you want us to meet and put it in there so that we know what exactly they're looking for, and it's not open to interpretation, so.
So, do we have a motion to send that letter?
I'll make that motion.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, what about sending some type of correspondence also to our state representatives, based on what you've told us, Joe, and Congress?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of what the purpose of tomorrow's meeting with them is, is to make them more aware of it, of what it's going to do to smaller departments specifically. So, in the OSHA document, they refer to volunteer fire departments, and they say the average across the country budget for volunteers, one point seven million dollars. Well, that's nowhere's around here, so for a budget, so.
What I'd like to do with our review, Joe, I'd like to, we'll put this letter on official village letterhead and put it on some really good paper, and then I'll sign it, and then maybe you can stop by and sign it, and we'll get it mailed out.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it's just, for them, it's just an upload. So, I mean, you can mail it if you want, but it's an upload right to their comment section is where it is. So, if I can get a copy, I can scan it and upload it right to them before the twenty-second, because that's when I close it, so.
Okay, next is, I think, updates, trainings, anybody have anything on that?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, my name is Paul Shepherd, I'm here representing Raycog this evening. Do I have time to speak about those items?
Oh, you're taking Mickey's place?
Well, I'm not taking his spot, those would be far too large issues for me to fill. But I am here to help Mickey on Raycog. I've been hired as an additional circuit rider to assist Raycog with some of their duties in the villages. So, in that light, if everybody has the digital version of the correspondence, I won't belabor that, it's all in there. A couple of the highlights, though, I would say, is that the civic service student activity is a pretty big highlight and push for the team as far as Raycog specifically goes and for Tuck Hill Commission. They're going to be working on that for next year's school year. That specifically focuses on youth engagement, to help engage youth as they drive towards the New York State Education Department's Seal of Civic Readiness. That would prepare the young students in high school to start engaging and becoming members of boards similar to this village or any other municipality. So, that's why that's so important, and as Mickey looks for support in that program for next school year, BOSI's has been a huge supporter of us so far, they've given us facilities, plus its support with supporting the students that will volunteer to do that program next year. Where we need your help, or where the ask is, is that if there's people that are interested in supporting those students from either a mentorship perspective or taking part in activities that go on, there will be two events throughout the school year next year. If you're interested in those things, please get ahold of Mickey. We need all the volunteer support we can get to help engage with those students, and we rely on your expertise to do that. Other than that, myself, like I said, my name is Paul Shepherd. I was an intern with the Tuck Hill Commission for a couple of months, as I get ready to depart from the military. Retire out of Fort Drum after about twenty-two years. My wife and I will live in Black River throughout the rest of our, you know, retirement years. My wife's a teacher down in South Jeff, and I'll work here in the local area. So, I look forward to doing that. I'm a volunteer firefighter and board of directors member for Black River, and I can echo everything the chief said. Our village is going through some of those same experiences. From the Raycog perspective, as we go village to village, we're hearing the same things from other municipalities about the OSHA standards, and you are joined with a common voice of that, it seems to be common support of opposing what, or requesting for heavy modification of what OSHA is asking for. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, any questions? That's all I have for the group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody see the correspondence from Nicole Brodenton? Yes. I have talked with Ward, he's working on that, and I think he talked with him too, did he, Tim?
I did, and I talked with John Rose this morning. The letter that he sent to landowners or property owners, he hasn't heard no response, so he's going to follow up on that. It's a little bit tough, you know, because I was in that position one time, you can't really go and knock on their doors, you got to somehow try to get ahold of them, and he's having a little trouble doing that, but he's following up on it.
But Ward is working on that, so you know. Plus, turns out, we all thought the person lived there, turns out, it's a rental property now, so. I just talked with Ward on it yesterday, so. Okay, abundant life. I have tried to get ahold of this gentleman four different times, have not reached him. I know Wendy sent him an email this morning, and hopefully she'll get something back. But questions we had, that I had, was, I was wondering if they were going to be using gas barbecue grills, or how they were going to be doing their hamburgers and hot dogs. Plus, I wanted to know that we, for this amount of people, we would need an insurance certificate. So, I figure the board should decide whether they want to approve that or not. I would think he's using gas grills, there probably going to not be a problem cooking his hamburgers and hot dogs, as long as he's not having open fires. As long as we got our insurance certificate, I think we'd be all right, but it's up to the board.
I think gas grills could be a huge issue. How many they're going to have there? I know this gentleman, Matt Alstead, I know him well, and I don't have any problem with what they want to do, but all you've got to do is have one issue with a gas grill on that, up there open, and that becomes an issue. And I don't, and the certificate of insurance, you know, is going to, they actually don't cover that, you know, certificate of insurance is just that, really nothing more. It's the body, the language of the policy that matters, so. My concern is gas grills, absolutely, it should be a concern. I'm not sure of his first name, but I almost think it's Brian Alstead's son. It is. Is it either one of, named Sherwin Williams?
No, it's another one.
Well, Brian used to be in Sherwin.
What's his, what's his name?
Josh is.
Yeah, Josh, you're right, Joe, yeah, okay. I don't know his math, though. And if we start a lot of gas grills, I, I don't know.
It's up to the board.
We definitely got to get the insurance certificate. We definitely need to get the insurance certificate, I mean, having a We definitely need to get the insurance certificate, I mean, they're having a bouncy house and the whole deal.
So, I guess the motion could be made as long as he, as long as he's not using open fires and, uh, provides us insurance, that could go on.
Yeah, I would agree.
I want to know who the company is and the body of the language as far as, are we gonna be having liability coverage for, and I'm sure we may have, but I think it's important sometimes when we get a certificate, we also ask for a copy of the policy because that certificate is only that and I've seen it too many times where that certificate of insurance doesn't cover the issue. Perfect example is, there's a difference between tree surgeon and lawn and maintenance policies. And I had somebody show up to my house wanting to drop a tree and I says, I wanna see proper insurance and show me a certificate. And I said, I wanna see the policy and the policy was for shrubs. He said, I got the right insurance. I said, no, you don't. I've had an experience where somebody dropped a tree on the house where their policy had expired, it was correct. And, uh, so you wanna make sure that you have the proper coverage and that's, that's one example I can give you, sport. Insurance has become a big deal.
So, do we have a motion on that?
I'm telling you, did you make a motion?
I didn't make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion as long as they don't have open flames and they provide proof of insurance.
Is that acceptable?
With the body of the policy.
What's that name?
With the body of the policy.
Okay.
So that our insurance agent can review it.
I'll second that one.
What exactly is the motion that you're approving?
You wanna use the park.
Oh.
You wanna use the ground, you wanna make sure that if you're putting at the park that...
It was due Saturday.
I'd like to have the motion ready.
Basically, the abundant life, church would like to host 200 people in the park.
Okay.
Hundred to two hundred, right?
Do, are we allowing what I asked for at the end of that term?
Yes.
Okay.
But we just need to make sure that there's insurance and stuff in place for that amount of people.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Paul Feeler?
Aye.
Close? Okay, Michelle, that's a good one, girl. You got me. Basically, that's Ed Murphy's girlfriend, right, Dan?
Michelle Misclavich. Okay.
They would like to use the park on, I believe it's September 14th. 14th. For a wedding, approximately 50 people. We've let people use the park before for weddings with no problem, so I don't, I don't see a problem on this one.
I got a question on that. Do you charge them for that? Do you use the park?
There's two charges. If they want electricity, there's a $25 charge and then there's another $25 charge, which basically goes for the use of the park, that's, so if we gotta go back and do cleanup, I'll be honest with you, those charges are minimal, they're not covering expenses.
So, I agree with you there, yeah. I was just wondering if you charged it, what, what the charge is?
Yeah, that's why they have to fill all regular paper.
Mayor, in our last meeting, we may have waived the $25 fee and only for the electric, do I incorrect the man?
Yes.
So, it'll be $25 fee, if they want to use power.
If they want electricity, correct.
Well, they're gonna wanna dance, so they're gonna music. Okay, we got a motion to prove that one?
I'll make a motion, we have to do that one.
I'll second.
Paul Feeler?
Aye.
Close? Village Attorney, you have anything?
That's all I have. Just wanted to point out, the, um, I, I was contacted by the attorney of the town of Lawville and in connection with Veterans Memorial Park, uh, the town board is receptive to cooperating with the village as far as eliminating a couple of the restricted covenants that are involved with it. I've got the parameters, I've been asked to prepare the draft document for the review, so I'll do that ASAP.
Cause that's one thing that we will need to go back to sunshine also.
Yes, yes. And, uh, our DPW superintendent was the one that initially identified those concerns we had to, to check out and to view and correct and there were some issues there, so. Yes, sir.
One thing I have, I'd like an executive session for a personnel issue.
There's a couple of them.
Court Attorney?
Same thing, I'd like an executive session for a personnel matter.
Chief of Police?
Been a little busy the past couple of weeks, obviously. Um, I had a meeting with FEMA on Monday, or last Friday and, uh, again on this past Monday, so we were able to turn in, we had a little over 120 hours man-hours, um, so we were able to turn them into FEMA, hopefully we can get some kind of reimbursement back, um, for wages. Uh, and then last night, we, we were fortunate, we had five of us on already because of the parade, so we were able to pretty adequately deal with round two. Um, I've been working with Lee Hinkleman with the Cream Cheese Festival stuff, um, just kind of ironing, ironing out some additional safety issues that we were talking about earlier. Um, they do have, here's a picture, uh, I had to get Joe and Paul, um, about, they're setting up a, a temporary refrigerator tent, basically.
I actually love doing that.
Okay.
Um, so, we're actually coordinating with a tent company to come in and put the tent in. Um, I'm George, and for the people that know, George Smith, I work at Craft. Um, I live right in the village at 5620 Water Street. Yep, um, and I actually own the house next door. Um, we, right now, the company is actually ordering the tent from, uh, from overseas in Europe and it is gonna be shipped here, um, on or about the 16th. Um, we cannot fit the new, cause we're, we're building a new cake pan that is for the new world's largest cheesecake, um, and it is gonna be approximately 11 and a half feet wide, um, and we don't know the exact weight yet, um, but the cheesecake itself will be about 15,000 pounds in just cheese. It's ridiculous, I know, we're doing it on purpose, uh, and now with, I've been working with, um, some local people to try and figure out, cause every, last time we did it back in 2013, we did it with a Cherokee, we're trying to find a Cherokee vocal that we can do it with, we just, actually this developed literally last week because of the rain. Um, but we were already looking at something like that prior to this too, but just not to the extent now it's real big push. But there, with the tent is approximately 20 by 20, we do have to have 480, um, watts of generation on site because the village doesn't have 480 watts anywhere, about three-phase power, so United Rentals will be providing that. Um, we may, um, I'm working with Lee to try and make sure it's not on the road and it's in the lot by the hot dog stand that's there, uh, but being 20 by 20 and with the refrigeration units, it, we're hoping it doesn't encroach, we did measure it out and we're hoping that it doesn't encroach, um, the, uh, the road at all. Uh, the delivery date is right now tend to be the 16th of September, um, that is the Monday prior, I am trying to get the company to deliver on the 18th instead and the date that we're trying to build the cheesecake is actually the 20th, not the 21st, because building a 15,000 pound cheesecake on the day of the cheesecake festival is not very tangible. Um, Lee is working with Fort Drum Tent Cab to try and get some volunteers from there, um, and there's a lot of things in motion, I'm trying to finalize everything by the end of this month, um, for going forward, but we've already spent a bunch of money, so we, and wheels were in motion, otherwise we would've just pushed it off a different year, um, cause it's a little uncouth. So, if the safety concerns are moving it around, really it's 20, it's probably gonna be around 20,000 pounds. Um, we really wanted a flat area, the fire hall is not a good location for that, um, and with the pitch to the driveway, there was a concern that if we were to lose control of the giant cheesecake, it could roll down to the main stage, which funny as it would be, would probably injure some people on, on the way.
Be good YouTube video.
But yeah, so Bakuch Welding is building the new pan, um, it's gonna be full of ice and, um, we're trying to present early and then we'll actually have people view it early and then present after that because it's so big. Um, and then legally, we're looking at giving away 50 ounce buckets of the cheese because we, a filler that'll fill the buckets, it's gonna take us a couple of hours to fill the buckets, so, yeah. Sorry. If anybody needs to email me or wants more information, just, uh, my email is super easy, it's george dot smith at craftheinz, um, dot com. So, and I have, I'm literally the only person doing the whole coordination now that Nick left and Gus left, so, yeah.
I hope you don't leave.
I'm not leaving, I'm never, they got to pry me out of that building. My commute is three minutes.
So, yeah, so that was the concern that I, that we had because initially, after talking with Lee, the tent was gonna go basically up to the back of the fire hall and they was gonna put it out in the street. You know, it's closed for that event, we're talking, Lee's talking, uh, closing it the 18th to the 24th.
Right, so...
Because of set up and tear down and...
That's what I'm trying to...
If, if it's into that street, that fire, I don't know what we, but now like you're saying, if he, if it's across the, the parkway drive into that lot...
Right.
That'll be more feasible and safer.
Correct, that's what we were thinking.
Okay.
But the vote would have to be, if we can keep it from approaching on the road, we'd have to still be closed on the 20th, which I don't know if the plan was already to close on the 20th, um...
That's, that's the day of?
Yeah, that's the day we're...
Yeah, yeah, it is anyway. It's closed from 5:00 AM until 8:00 PM.
So, that's, that's the day before.
The 20th?
The 20th is the day before.
21st is your, okay, so the 20th, it's not closed.
Okay, so...
That's a whole nother, you'd have to pick that up.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of like coordinating, we're gonna have to close it because we're gonna have like a truck home with a bunch of stuff just for the tent. Each piece is 5,000 pounds.
So, last month, it was just, the only thing it closed was the 21st, I believe, right? That's in the meeting? I think that's what, I think that's where it ended, right?
Yeah, sorry, sorry about all the like short stuff, it's just like literally gonna hang all this stuff.
If we do that, which I don't have a problem with, we're probably gonna have to maybe allow some people to park on Waters Terrace that work for the county or somewheres that day because I'm assuming we're gonna eliminate a lot of parking spaces that the county uses to work in the courthouse.
So, we were able to, as long as we push it all the way to the end of their lot, we would only be taking up the driveway part and like four or five places because it's 20 by 20.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they'll have it open, but, but I'm...
And they're not gonna be there at 8:00 tomorrow.
His concern is traffic getting around it. If they park a truck in front of the tent to build the cheesecake, it's gonna block at least one lane of traffic if not.
Right, right. And being 12 feet, essentially 12 feet wide, it's literally takes up the whole road.
What would it take to close that road just from the library to the fire department?
It wouldn't take any, I mean, it's on the road.
Well, I understand that, so it wouldn't be that big of a deal?
Yeah, we could, we, yeah, we could set up parades into that and sure to...
We could make that, we can approve that.
Yeah.
And then you can get us to approve, track the schematics.
I mean, I gotta drive all the way around, oh my God.
So, I do have, I do have the plans for the actual tent itself, which has the dimensional on it.
They just got it right there.
Yeah, eat that. Yep. That, that is the picture I was gonna send you.
So, that's got to happen, but, so we definitely will not be using the fire hall for the cheesecake.
A hundred percent not using, and I know you guys don't like it in there anyway, so we're gonna try and, I actually talked to Lee about potentially in the future, going back, once we go back to the smaller pan, to try and do it in the same spot every year as opposed to fire hall, cause it does eat up a huge amount of the fire hall, there's, it's unnecessary from, I talked to Derek Langdon, we don't have to do it in the fire hall. We can get a tent and put a tent up every year, just not the cool tent. Um, and the cheesecake is gone within four hours, so that's reasonable on our side too. So, maybe for next year, we can talk about that, a little early to the problem.
Can you...
Nope, that's all I have.
I did have one thing. We did have a meeting down at the county garage with Homeland Security and FEMA went over lunch and then the following morning, uh, Paul, myself, FEMA guys, our resident engineer, uh, we got Pat Squirtle working with us because of all the damage. He basically went around to all our sites and FEMA gave us some, guys gave us some really good, Allah, Paul.
Oh, what Joe said, we, we, it wasn't actually FEMA, it was New York State.
Yeah, it's New York State.
Division of it. So, we went around to all of our bad spots that we had during our wonderful week and I showed them erosions, I showed them roads that were ruined, um, got a lot of good information from them. They were gonna sit down, I believe today, at a round table and discuss everything. So, basically, the way it's gonna work is they're gonna get together, um, get a whole plan of what we had for damages here in the village and then another week or two, FEMA will actually come in and we'll have to do this whole thing over again, go from spot to spot and show them, show them the damages. Um, you know, it's, you've heard the county talk about it and you've gotta hit that 37 million threshold, which we've got some legislators here today and, you know, I, I don't, I don't see where we won't hit that, that threshold, being that the school gotta hit hard, um, a lot of other towns did, there's bridges, culverts, um, so I'm hopeful that, you know, we will see some money. I had, uh, Hemlock Drive, which is the old 801, had, uh, the road just destroyed there. Um, so I, I got a contractor in there because people couldn't get in and out of their houses, so I, I hired a contractor to come in, luckily I've got one that works with the village quite a bit, he dropped everything, brought his whole crew here, um, restored the road so people could get in by Friday and unfortunately, yesterday, it was all wiped out. Um, we had a couple culvert pipes, uh, that got plugged up due to the amount of flooding, rocks got in there, so that caused that. Um, I just, I wanted to thank the village police, uh, our DPW guys, they all went above and beyond. Um, everybody here was a hundred percent village, did anything and everything. I know there was a lot of mad people because we didn't get to their houses in time, but, um, we tried our best. Yeah, and we're still out there working, working every day, trying to repair some of the damages. Luckily, there was, except for that one street, there wasn't tons of major damage, there was no damage to any of our water sewer lines, um, so that's a good thing. I know it was a big inconvenience for a lot of people, especially last night, you see the manhole covers popping and, uh, but when you get that amount of water that quick, there's really no system that can handle it. We've, we've done our five street project and I know there's been a lot of conversation in the village about necking down and that's the reason why there was tons of flooding. The whole five street project, none of the piping was necked down. Basically, the old storm system was laid up stone and it was a four-foot box. We put back in there four-foot pipe, so it has the same volume as what that old system has, but this, the plastic pipe we put in there is gonna last a hundred plus years. So, that's a big misnomer, um, yeah. So, we're still out there working and my guys are here, they've been here 24/7. We were here last night till 10 o'clock trying to, uh, fix the problem on Hemlock and a couple other streets. We finally got Hemlock, uh, this morning taken care of, now we're just gonna go back in and rebuild that road. Um, we've been looking at all of our, all of our bridges, Mill Creek, um, with FEMA, uh, Joe and I have showed them areas in Mill Creek where there's been a lot of debris, trees, um, so hopefully with this storm, we can actually get into Mill Creek or hire somebody to get in Mill Creek and actually turn it back into a creek, not ponds and...
Trees.
Yeah.
Off my back, behind my office, they can see where a pile were...
Ben there.
Yeah.
The ben everywhere. So, but luckily, like I said, our bridges here in town, um, there's debris around them, but the bridges are solid. Now, I'm not a bridge engineer, but I, I took a look at all of them, looked at the erosion that was around them. Didn't see anything of, that would, uh, cause us to close it or, um, whatever. We are going to, at some point through FEMA, hire a company to come back in, camera all of our sewer lines, our storm sewer lines, um, to make sure there's no damage. And that'll give us, because right now, we don't, we know where everything is, we don't know the conditions of the piping because they've been in there so long. And us as a DPW crew would take us three, four years to go and look at all that stuff. So, talking with FEMA, they said they actually would cover to have a company come in, go through our whole system, which would be great because it would be, now it would be all GPS and everything, so... There's good things that came out of this flood. I know there's a lot of bad things, but us as a village, I think there's, there's, it's gonna help us in the long run.
Question?
Yes.
There's been some concern about the parking lot of the hospital and runoff. Uh, is that, is that a fair concern, in your opinion?
It's a concern of me, yes. After seeing the amount of water that came on the upper parking lot, um, there's gotta be a way to retain that water if we have a flood like that again. It, it can handle water coming down there, but the amount of water that came down this time, it's, their system is...
I was asked to go up and look. I did. And I'm not an engineer or a planning sergeant, but I could see that that certainly could crush them. There was rocks all over the place and this was an hour after the storm and everything was calm and the sun was out. It was still running pretty good.
I would say most of your, most of the flooding down North State Street and at the intersection by Monument Park was caused from the water coming off Hospital Hill.
And so the first storm where a school had immense damage would be the same?
That, I can't tell you. I wasn't here.
That's right. Well, I was just, I, I, I'll say this.
Yeah, the second storm, because I wasn't here for the first one.
I, I, well, no, but what I will say is they were, they were eerie parallel in, uh, in what it was.
One thing I would wanna mention, too, like Paul said, uh, some of our storm drains and things, I mean, we're plugged up with rocks. When he's talking rocks, he's not talking, uh, small rocks like this. We had probably twenty to twenty-four inch round boulders plugging up thirty-inch storm drains. And it was amazing to think the water could move those boulders.
Right. And you, you normally, when you're doing a ditch line, that comes into a culvert, you put, it's called small shot rock, you put it in there to slow the water down. But with that amount of flow, that amount of rain and that short of a period, the amount, the, the flow of water was just, I mean, it could've pushed a car, so that tells you how the flow was. So those bigger rocks actually pushed and that's what plugged everything up.
I mean, they didn't plug out the end either. They went, like, down ten feet or better in the water.
But I will say that even if they hadn't plugged, we still would've had flooding.
That didn't help, said Julie.
Did not. Did not help Hemlock at all.
I know on Stone Street, you, uh, if you want to fix that road, we've, we've, my cellar was flooded and with it, because it always ran down my driveways. And with them putting that road in there, it did not run down my driveway.
Well, that's good to hear.
Okay, that, that's all I got. Capital future planning in there?
Yes.
One, one quick thing. Um, so there were changes about four or four years ago to the top of Summit where the water came off that, those fields.
Correct. It wasn't a change. We, well, not we, the county, the town and the village actually piped it in because it was an open ditch.
So I've heard that from the person who lives literally right where the culvert is, that there was weeping that was put in and all that weeping that was now out of the ground. As of Wednesday, from the hydraulic pressure from the water underground, it pushed all those rocks, all the weeping that up and it's all gone now. It's all, like, jacked up. And the person that lives right there...
Are you talking Matushak's?
No, I'm talking about Tracy Longway.
Okay.
Yeah, she had water.
Right where the box culvert is.
Yeah, she had the culvert right behind her house.
Yeah.
Um, and she said, she had pictures of where the original culvert was and it was different than the current culvert.
No, it hasn't changed. We didn't, we didn't do anything to where that pipe entered into that system. All we did was tie it in. It was, it was an open ditch right there before. So basically, we took that thirty-six inch pipe and actually piped it into, into that closed system.
Okay.
To actually help her out because her backyard used to get flooded all the time.
Yeah, she had, she sent me pictures of that.
Yeah, I was not aware of flooding behind her house.
Oh, it was all, it was all windows, like, I posted it.
Well, I will, I'll take a look at it. When I looked up there, it was all green grass, so, uh, thank you.
No, it's all, it's all, it's all, like, dislodged and that right now.
So, not that I don't wanna continue, but when I talked with the people from New York State that were up here that are gonna talk with FEMA, um, they had mentioned that there is a mitigation, in our mitigation plan, we need to put in that main trunk line that goes from the hospital all the way down to Boswick Street, because there's a possibility, there are a few houses where that goes underneath and we did have some problems. There's a possibility that we could get funded to actually move that line and get it out of people's basements, but, I mean, that's something that we're looking into. Because it, it, it has been an issue since I've been here, so...
Capital future planning in there?
For your party.
Personnel, like I say, I'd like a exact session to discuss personnel issues. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Finance?
No.
Please, fire your partner.
We've already covered the, the new OSHA, whatever requirements from, yeah, Pat, the letter, I think we're good.
I got some other stuff.
You got some more to talk? All right, bring it up.
Not fast enough, but, um, where do we stand with the roof issue? I know we've been busy, busy, but just, uh, so we found a few more spots that leaked during that storm. I don't know if it was just because of the amount of water that was up there, but we have some spots out in the apparatus area that were pouring in water as well, so...
Could that be put in under FEMA?
Money was put in the budget for that roof.
Right, and that's, yeah, we're just wondering where we're at, just so we can not forget about it, so... Um, the other thing is, they would like, uh, we were wondering if you guys are okay with it. We'd like to put in a DRI project for hopefully getting our HVAC systems all updated. Um, being that it's your building, we wondered if you wanted to do it or if you're okay, we can do it as a tenant as well, which we're willing to do, um, if that's what you guys want. We want your permission, basically, to pursue that.
That's something they uncovered.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure it is, because I know Brian's been working with the planning department and I think, like, that's where we got the idea that maybe we should look into putting it, because...
Why can't we bless it, have them provide the work, but we submitted as a board? Or do we have to fire departments submit themselves?
I think they're better off because of the other projects that we already have.
Right, and that's what we were wondering, maybe it'd be better if it was a separate project, just because...
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Um, and then just, I, I know we've touched about the storm, but I wanted to give you the fire department's statistics for that. Um, so we responded to more than two hundred calls for assistance that night. Um, and just so those of you that know my annual report, I mean, we average two hundred calls a year. So we doubled our call volume in that one night. Um, very early on, it was very evident that the calls we were getting, um, the, the way that it was being dispatched wasn't working, so we changed our tactics. We just started going door to door, street to street, which worked out really well. Um, we had a lot of good compliments from the community who were, who never even thought to call, but were very grateful to have a few firefighters knocking on their door and say, hey, do you need anything? And, I mean, most of it was basements, but we were also offering any other assistance if they needed anything else. Um, I've heard great things from everyone and, and everyone I've talked to said that everyone was very professional, so I'm very grateful for that. Um, Lavo Fire had thirty-five members total that responded to the incident at one point or another, which was really great. Uh, most of us were there right from two PM on Wednesday, right through till five thirty AM on Thursday, which we had a few hours break before we started again Thursday morning, because we had more calls throughout the day on Thursday. Um, total for this event for Wednesday and Thursday, total man-hours, Lavo firefighters put in five hundred and five man-hours for this event. Um, so that is, again, very commendable. Um, another thing, because it only affected Lavo, I was able to call in mutual aid departments, so I had eleven fire departments there who provided me with another ninety-four volunteers that night. So, so all in all, we had a hundred and twenty-nine volunteer firefighters out there going door to door, so I think that's, that needs to be noted and very, I appreciate it. I appreciated the neighboring departments. They were all willing to help. I had, I had calls from as far as St. Lawrence County and Oneida and Herkimer County from fire chiefs that were willing to send up crews. Thankfully, we didn't need it. We, we kept it between Lewis and Jefferson County departments. Um, so overall, we had eight hundred total man-hours for this event between us and our mutual aid department. So again, I just wanna make sure that's recognized. Um, I wanna make sure I recognize Sammy, because I know Paul was out of town, but Sammy took my calls every, every time I called him and he was able to help me out with whatever I needed, so he should be commended for his duties that night. The entire village crew, village PD, um, without any of them, it allowed us to concentrate on going door to door when they were handling road closures and all the other stuff that they were handling, so... All in all, mirroring what they said, great response from everyone involved. I wouldn't have it any other way, so...
Joe, thank you so much. And tomorrow, when you're done meeting, I'm gonna try and be there, too. Bring that up.
Yep. Oh, and on the FEMA thing, I met with them as well. Um, depending on how it works, depending on where we get threshold-wise, things like that, the fire department, um, could be reimbursed for our time, so that's good for something at least. And the rough estimate, it could be anywhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars that we get reimbursed for that. I mean, we've obviously split that up between the departments that came, but it could be a significant amount that we get reimbursed for that, because they'll actually pay, in a situation like that, they'll actually pay an hourly rate for every firefighter that was there, um, and they'll pay, like, for our portable pumps, they give us an hourly rate for using them. For our engines, an hourly rate for that, and, uh, like it said, rough numbers, they're, they said it could be anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars with the numbers I gave them, so...
Anything on the police department, Tim, or recording?
Just mirroring what Joe said, to thank these guys for the time they put in, uh, in a few days and actually yesterday also.
I'll say we're wandering around.
I joked, I joked with Darla, he was getting off early last night. I don't think that happened.
No. Planning board and zoning board, anything?
No report.
Municipal board, anything?
No, short meeting last week, but what more's going on?
Some towns tomorrow, right? Anything there?
No.
County, anything?
Uh, I did attend the meeting, but it was nothing, you know, to do with the village.
Recreation, uh, that's ongoing. It was shut down for a few days, but they got it back up and running. It's being held down here at the JCC Center now and it started back up supposedly today.
Mayor, I didn't have anything I wanna say on recreation, but a couple of things I did wanna bring up. First, uh, the post office. I've been in contact with Congresswoman Stefanik's office and I talked with them again because they told me that for two days now, the post office would get a hold of us. I think our post office people within the community do an excellent job. I'm very concerned that our postmaster seems to be nonexistent and that seems to have happened pretty much since Diane Purvitz was here. I believe it's completely unacceptable, but I don't, you know, they keep saying, throwing it back in my face, well, we can't use a local post office because it's a safety issue. And I get that. But for someone to have to travel twenty-eight miles that has a box inside that post office is absolutely insane. Furthermore, you can't get the mail in Watertown unless you show identification. So if, and all you have to do is read these notes that's on their window and it's signed by the postmaster and there's covered two people. And there's no, no way you can contact with no email address or anything. So I've been in contact with the congressman's off, Congresswoman's office and they keep saying they're gonna get back to me and he said, call me if they don't get back to you before the meeting, which they haven't. How does somebody that's ninety years old get their medication? Because first off, they probably can't drive. Second off, they gotta go there. Whereas when you got your local post office, you can go in for a friend, if you know their combination, and get their mail for them. But going to Watertown, so I just want people to know this. I've tried and I feel that the system in this, this realm has, has failed us. Um, we don't even know how much longer it's gonna be closed, so are we talking three weeks? Then somebody approached me on the street yesterday. She said, I just walked over to the post office to get my mail. I get it once a week. She said, I'm not driving to Watertown to get it. And who knows who's got what down there, so... I've been approached on it and I just wanted to tell everybody that I tried to do it. Thanks, Mayor.
The postmaster that is in Lavo now lives two and a half hours away. And she goes to, if you're gonna try to get a hold of her, it would be through the Watertown office. That's where she goes.
They should be talking to us. We should have them try, and I've tried to do some...
You're a local government. You're not federal. They don't care.
Okay, moving, you done, Dan?
Yes, I am.
Anybody, have any more questions for this gentleman?
Rico.
No? We'll go to public counter.
Joe?
Yeah, just a second. Okay, Carol, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Lucker. I live at seventy-five thirty-eight Cascade Avenue. And the thing is, is that I'm here today is why haven't those shrubs at the corner of Stone Street and Cascade Ave been done? The thing is, I've been here to two meetings and I've been worried about, uh, safety. Why are we taking so long on this? I asked that it was hopefully would've been taken care of before the summer. Now, the person that owns that property today, she trimmed, just like she did before, underneath. There's no trimming that, like, we're supposed to be twenty-four inches away from the sidewalk. We have given that person enough time. I have almost gotten hit and I know another member on your board almost got hit. Why are we waiting on this? I thought you're supposed to protect the people here. It is a safety issue. Do you all want to be blamed if someone gets seriously killed? You are giving that person so much time. Enough's enough. And then also, I think we need to bring back our own code officers, because number one, I've gone to codes because of my neighbor next door of what she's doing. She's not mowing her lawn. And I have to go and complain and complain and complain. And codes up there, too, when I was up there Monday, they said, we're tired of this. That's part of their job. We all pay for that. And that's what they, they were, they're tired of it. Can't you get along with it? I said, I tried. And the thing is, with her, and she, she'll call the cops. She's, she's terrible. And then when she does mow, it looks terrible towards my property, because when you mow the lawn, it's burnt, it's, it's dead. That's yellow all along there. Do you think I appreciate that? It affects my property when someone comes and sees that. I mean, come on, you all. Let's get going on these, on these laws. If you don't wanna do nothing about these laws, then void them out. That's all, I, I mean, it's just getting ridiculous. You all know, have known for years about Cascade and Stone Street. You guys are just sitting on it. Hopefully, I didn't get killed, because I'm gonna tell you something. If I did, or anybody else, I'm gonna tell you, I will sue the landowner and I will sue the village, because you all are aware of it. And it's not gonna make the village look very good. And it's not going to make the village look very good. Do you want that to happen? I'm asking each and every one of you. Why are we waiting? And also the thing is, is that like I said, we've got laws. I went up there, codes don't want to really take care of it because they're being bothered. And they were saying that law for the grass thing is stupid. Then why do we have these laws and why do we have codes? We're paying their wages, they're working for the county, they're working for me, they're working for all of you. Now what the heck, when I hear that from a code officer, what do you think that means to me? And they want complaints. You've done it, I've done it. The thing is, is that also, they're not user friendly. You go on there to do a complaint, you have to make a copy, you cannot fill it out or nothing and press send. You should be able to do that and you can't. So either you've got to personally go up there or mail it. And the same thing with the village, for any complaints, you cannot send to fill it out when you have a complaint. You've got to personally either mail it or you've got to personally come and bring it in. It's not, either the county, both the county and the village is not user friendly. That's all I've got to say.
Any other questions, still in?
Yeah, I have to. Thank you, DVW for putting up barricades up on Stone Street, making them one-way. Could we replace the detour signs with signs that say one-way?
They don't have any right now.
Well, also to be aware, there have been cars hitting those barricades.
I know.
And, you know, so you might get a bill for some paint, I don't know. But just, I want to thank you for the effort, but that's just, people are just ignoring it.
That's all we have.
So, okay. Wife had the ass.
Any other public comment?
What about these abandoned houses that are overgrown? Is there anything we can do about it?
Well, when I send a complaint, I turn it over to Ward.
I sent Dan some pictures.
One of the problems we're running into is a lot of these abandoned houses, they've gone back to banks and mortgage companies and they're not local, they're like in Texas.
Right.
And that's tough getting them to.
Well, you know the one up on Judge Merrill Street, as I call it, the green monster? That house, I sent Dan some pictures of it. It's, it hasn't been mowed yet this year. I mean, it's just overgrown and there's rats. And in the barn, the girls got the picture of the raccoon in the barn back there. The windows are all broke out of it, half of them, the upstairs windows are just open. They went in and cleaned it out, whoever bought it, but then they just left it. You know, you know what house I'm talking about, I know you do. Yeah. I mean, I mean, I think that's a health hazard actually with all of them. I've seen rats and mice and stuff running around there. I didn't know if there was anything you guys could do about it or get a hold of somebody, at least get them to cut the grass.
Like Joe says, we have four or five properties here in the village that I've actually gone in and mowed on my own, just because it looks horrible. But we try to get a hold of them, their banks, their holding companies, their attorneys.
Well, I know somebody owns that house because they cleaned it up.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that one.
You know, because I mowed out to the side of, I take her John Walton's place, which is behind there and I mowed the driveway at least so it didn't overgrow and I just cut it back a little bit. But I don't want to cut on somebody else's property and then get in trouble for it either.
Which, do you know the, is there nobody living there or?
There's nobody living there. No, they just, they bought the house, it was, what's his name's there? Oh, I can't think of it.
Jamie.
Jamie, yes. What? No, it's not, it's.
I know who you mean too.
Yeah, right, his mother, his mother and aunt live there. And then it went, I think it went to the bank and then some contractor's going to redo it.
That's the green and purple one?
Yeah, I call it the big green monster. The, yeah, the Grinch house, that's what we call it.
We'll see what we can, we'll see what we can find out.
Right, I just didn't know because John Walton talked to me about it because I cut it back a little bit. But I said to him, I can't cut it back too far because what happens if I get on and I get in trouble for it?
So I do want to thank all the nearest responders and the DVW people that helped out on Wednesday. There, there is an issue down at the end of Water Street on South, I think it's South State Street. I can't use the state streets straight from my head. One of the state streets. Water pooling down there a lot more than it ever has since the pump has been added. And there was some grading that used to be there where before the pump, we raised the pump up, up to a higher level and it's causing some issues where the water's not leaving that area. It's not going down the storm drains, it's just collecting and collecting and collecting. The curb does not go down to the culvert that was put midway between the fire hydrant. So in front of the fire hydrant, the curb just goes down and is over. And then there's a culvert about fifteen, twenty feet down, like further down the road. But it's not actually like encased or anything like that. And what's happening, at least on my property and Mike's property across the street, is everything's just going down our driveways or the neighbors' driveways or the right-of-way and it's literally just flooding our basements. I had six feet of water in my basement on Wednesday, I had another two feet last night. I'd never had water in there before. Mike, who grew up in that house since the early eighties, he said they never had water in the basement and we have water. And I understand that with flash flooding, weird things happen. Absolutely, totally understand. There is issues that weren't present before that are present now. Now, five years ago, when I bought the Wintryck House, all the water from Water Street before the Five Streets would go down my driveway and in my basement. So I know that there's a ton of water that comes down Water Street. And we're seeing a lot of water going down the state street side. And I think it used to go down through the grass where the pump house is. And we graded that all up nice and high so we could protect it. But then in doing so, now all the water just, instead, there was a river about ten feet wide behind the pump house. There's sunk down, on the right-of-way, there's a sunk down area now. And it's not for me driving on it, it's literally from the water undermining underneath the shale. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I did have a mason come in today and he told me to seal everything up differently than it's already sealed. And I've had other people come in and say, you're going to have to change all the grading and everything. But the big thing is, is that the curb stops for no reason and I don't know why. And I don't know why anybody engineered it that way. And then it's basically a giant bowl and it's collecting water and there's three, there's three grates there. And they weren't pushing, they weren't, the water wasn't coming out of them, water just wouldn't go down. And I understand it's because of your hole. But the manhole cover popped out. It's popped out, I think it popped out last week or on Tuesday, I'm not entirely sure if it did. But it was dancing on Wednesday pretty bad, even when they found it. But all that used to go in the river and now it doesn't. I didn't, I don't know if there's some changes we need to make to that driveway or I know I'm going to make changes to my house that's there to try and get around this issue. But it's gonna, the water's going to continue to go down there regardless of what we do, whether it's a flash flood, whether it's anything else, there's a lot of water that's collecting in the front of the house on the state street side. And I don't know.
I'll take a look at it.
If you want to come down, I'm free every day at three AM, so. My in-laws live there, don't talk to my father-in-law, he's a little crazy. He's actually living there right now, running on generators. He, he's the one that sits at the curb and he sits all the way in the back under the tree all the time and just sits there, stares.
Well, you're going to fit in walls, have money on it.
So, but yeah, yeah, I don't know what the solution is and I'd like to actually have a dialogue with everybody so that like I don't get mad because I'm already ten thousand dollars in the hole because I had to have the state pump out my basement. Because the fire company couldn't. And I, and I don't know what there is for relief either. I know that the salon had a ton of water in it. I know Mike's house had a ton of water. Jordan Arthur's house was full, Zeke's house was full, his whole addition, it was all rained out. Everybody that was down the low-end park, there was a river probably fifteen feet wide running through everyone's backyard back there. The Stokes' house was completely full. The Jessica Jones and her house, they lost their entire basement where they had two bedrooms. And again, we all know that this is a flash flood. Insurance isn't covering any of this. And a lot of the people down there are all having issues and they all lost a lot of stuff. And I know people on the higher end of the village did too. But we had a lot of water, but a lot. Thank you.
Is there any way, I ask you more for them, to get stuff like stone or something from the village to fix like by the, right by the edge of where the grass and the road meet? Or do they, the homeowners have to buy it themselves?
We see a problem, we usually take care of it. I mean, obviously now there's problems everywhere.
There's everywhere, but I'm just asking if you needed to come and get some to fix it.
Yes.
We can come.
Yes.
We have to contact you?
Yes.
Because somebody asked you that and I said I have no.
My policy has always been, we have, most of the time we have coal patch over there, we have stone and we have sand. The village residents pay for it. You know, obviously I don't want you to come with a dump truck.
Right, right.
But I've always told people. Yes.
And I didn't know that, that's why.
I'm not going to deny anybody from coming down and getting some stone or some sand or whatever. As long as they contact me, so my guys know that Joe Blow's in there with his truck.
I'm in there with the truck and I don't want to get shy, so. Or you call the police and he comes on the rest, mate, he's just lucky to do it, so. Just kidding, just thank you guys, buddy.
So we have a motion to go into executive session then for personnel issue? Second, all second. All favor?